Here we go. I call this meeting to order. Please silence all your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Briggs, please.
Our Father in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not temptation, but deliverance from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments?
No.
This one, Batavia Players submitted an application to hold a performance in the city concourse this Thursday and Friday, August, or, October 28th and 29th at 7:30 PM. It's a similar setup as their performance in August. They are aware of the cost and are good with that.
And I see the cost is estimated $283.38 just from Public Works, what, for cleanup and setup and opening and closing and things like that? Anyone else have any questions?
How many people are going to have to be assigned to this?
I don't have the exact, I don't know.
Probably one to open and to close. Yep, so it would be overtime and they're paying for it.
The next City Council business meeting will be held on Monday, November 8th at 7:00 PM at City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And now we have a 75th anniversary proclamation for the Genesee Symphony Orchestra. Do you want to come up?
Can I read it? Whereas the Genesee Symphony Orchestra located in Batavia is celebrating its 75th anniversary. The Genesee Symphony Orchestra is a dynamic regional orchestra. Whereas in 1947, Batavia Civic Orchestra, later renamed the Genesee Symphony Orchestra, was founded and is one of the oldest civic orchestras in the New York State. Whereas Genesee Symphony Orchestra's mission is to link diverse public with the arts, enriching the community through high-quality performance, educational opportunities, guest artists, and partnerships. And whereas the orchestra has been an important institution within the city of Batavia and the surrounding community since its founding. And whereas, in addition to its annual concerts, the Genesee Symphony Orchestra holds an annual young artist competition, a meet the orchestra event, and a spring workshop. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Batavia offers congratulations and best wishes to the Genesee Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations.
Anything you'd like to say? That was a tight.
We would just like to say that we are so appreciative of the City Council and the community of Genesee County for supporting us for the last 75 years. We've had some struggles, especially during the pandemic, the last year and a half, but we have stayed strong thanks to the support of all of our patrons, and we look forward to the next 75-plus years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, fee schedule, proposal, presentation, assistant city manager. So I need to move.
We do have to bring the screen down, thank you.
Yes, it is.
It is cold.
No. What the hell?
It is what they check the heat.
No, she's not.
Thanks, Patty.
Okay. Hey, chief.
Sean's using his.
Always know where the button is.
Okay, there you go.
Now I can. Jill, I tried. I didn't have the heat.
Inside.
Yep, I see it.
Oh, it's very chilly.
Shoot, I should have pressed pause.
No, I'm freezing.
I feel great. I don't know what's going on. I'll turn the heat on.
I'm hearing.
I'll turn it on. Like 67 and 1/2 degrees. All right, now what do I do?
You shouldn't have to do anything. I should be able to do it.
Okay.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the city fee schedule. We're going to talk about the current fee schedule and the proposed fee schedule. I'm going to run down a little bit about the inspections department and who I am so you have a little bit of better idea. So our inspections department is made up of a couple of folks. We have two full-time inspectors that also work as plan review. And so when I say plan review, I'm also going to take you through a little bit of a life of a permit, so how a permit starts, so you understand the process. We also have a fantastic secretary and a gentleman that does part-time code enforcement for us. Let me talk a little bit about myself. Jill Wedrick. I worked for the Genesee County Planning Department for a number of years before I went to the city of Rochester and was the manager of zoning. And as the manager of zoning, I aided code enforcement, I did code compliance, did permitting, all of those good things. So you have a little bit of a background, too. My family has been somewhat in construction since they arrived in America. So construction, I guess, is a little bit in my blood. Prior to joining the Genesee County Planning Department, I was also a construction inspector. So I was out there inspecting the soil, the concrete, the rebar, proof rolling, doing all that good stuff. So I know a little bit to be dangerous. So when I came here, the first thing that I wanted to do is learn how the city of Batavia does things, because every municipality handles permits differently. So in the city of Batavia, let's talk about the life of a permit. So I decide that I want to do a project at my house. And sometimes I might do the drawings by myself, or maybe I hire a contractor to do those for me or an architect. So I go to the permitting office and I submit my drawings. And I think a lot of us think that once those drawings are submitted, that that's the end of the story, that I get my permit and I move on with my life. Unfortunately, that's not the end of the story. So many times when our crew gets a permit into the office, it's reviewed at least twice, maybe three times. Drawings that are submitted are typically missing some item. So it takes a couple of hours to review that and figure out, okay, are they meeting New York State building code? Are they meeting the city zoning code? Are there fire codes that they need to meet, et cetera? So it's not, I stop in, I drop off my permit, and I leave with something. It takes a little bit of time. So once we're able to issue a permit then, there's a number of inspections that take place. So typically for a residential permit, so for an addition, the inspector might go out there five times. So they're checking out, okay, first, what does the soil look like? Then they're checking out, okay, you formed the, you have the forms in for the foundation, I'm checking that. Then they're going to actually see the foundation potentially poured. So they're out there a number of times. So it's not, you build your addition, you go back, the inspector checks it out. It's a number of stops that that inspector's making. And then ultimately, they have to enter all of this into the system, which takes time. And currently, what they're doing is they're not able to enter that information out of the field, they actually have to come back to the office and enter it in. And to give you a little flavor on this, so I went out with an inspector, I said, "Take me out and show you, show me how you do citations." And I'm accustomed to people having laptops in the field, putting in all the information, walking away, emailing stuff. And I went out, and they had a notepad, and they wrote all of it down, and I went, "Okay, this is different." And I said, "Well, what happens next?" They said, "Well, I have to go in and input all this information in the computer." And I said, "But you're doing it twice then. We're citing people twice." And I said, "Yeah, that's our process right now." Which brings me now to EnterGov. So EnterGov is the software program that we're working on creating now. And essentially, what it's going to do is provide the opportunity for our code enforcement officers to do things in the field live. It's going to make them 1,000 times more efficient. It's going to make the process easier, not only for them, but also for the public. So it's going to advance our inspections department tremendously. As part of that, we reviewed the processes and procedures and revealed issues with the current fee schedule. So the current fee schedule, has anybody here ever applied for a permit? Did you calculate the fee by yourself? Because it's difficult, okay? And I can tell you, as someone that's been in permits for a while, I even said to Doug, I said, "I'm going to try to calculate it, and then you tell me if I was wrong." And you know I was wrong on two of the permits? So it's very challenging for not only the public, but for staff to look at these permits that we're getting in and saying, "Okay, what is the fee?" And I said to Doug, I said, "How often do you get a check in the mail for a permit, and it's incorrect?" He said, "Very often." He said, "And then we're working with the applicant." That, of course, is taking time away from their other items that they're supposed to be working on. And that can be frustrating for the applicant, because if I'm planning a project, I'm putting out a budget, and I'm saying, "The permit's going to cost me X amount. This is going to cost me X amount, so I'm factoring that in." So again, it's not easily understood by the public. And of course, I said, "Okay, well, when was the last time that we updated these, these permit fees?" Typically, permit fees are looked at, I would say about every five years. In this case, we couldn't find any documentation that they had even been updated. So I can safely say, not in the last 15 years. And I think we all know that things have increased in price in the last 15 years. So we took a look at all of this. The person that really worked the most on this entire project was Doug Randall. And Doug Randall comes with a wealth of experience. He previously served at the city of Buffalo and at the village of Kenmore, he actually designed their fee schedule. So what he did is he looked at other municipalities that were our size and said, "What are they using? What works?" And so for him and for the rest of the crew, the fee structure is key in this situation, because it provides the ability for us to look back, to look forward in five years and say, "Okay, we're reviewing the fee schedule. Do we need to change anything?" And in this case, it's changing percentages. It's changing flat fees. It's doing things like that. So the current fee schedule is based on the cost of the project along with square footage with no flat fee permits. Who doesn't love flat fee permits? You know exactly what you're paying for whatever your project is. A flat fee permit also says, you can put in whatever sort of high-end products that you'd like to use for that project and not, not be penalized for that because of the cost, the overall cost of the project. Oftentimes, our colleagues are getting inaccurate cost for a project. And this happens across the board in every municipality. So somebody knows that they're doing a $10,000 deck, they will come in and the inspector will say, "Well, how much is that deck?" And they say, "I am only spending $2,500." And we base the permit fee on that $2,500. And everybody knows that that deck is really $10,000. But we don't have the ability at this point to say, "No, no, no, I know how much that's going to be." The proposed fee schedule takes that out. So we're actually going to be calculating things so that they make sense and that they're the actual fee. The schedule penalizes use of higher-end materials for projects. So for example, if I want to put up a vinyl fence, that's going to cost me more money. It's also going to cost me more money currently for the permit. With the proposed, there's going to be a flat fee for whatever fence I'm putting up. Work without a permit is also currently not penalized. So at this point, if I'm a contractor or a person, and I'm like, "You know what? I'm going to take my chances. I'm going to gamble. I'm going to just do my project, and if I get cited, well, then I know I'm just going to pay the permit fee, no big deal. And if I don't, then I get that permit money." So there's no penalty. Going forward, we propose that you would pay three times that permit fee. So it's really telling people, "You need to get a permit. We need to make sure you need building code and any of their codes that are involved." So the proposed permit fee schedule is one that can easily be calculated by EnterGov and the public. And if you've taken a look at the draft permit fee schedule, you'll notice that it's easily calculable. I'm not a math major, and I get it. It's fair to all. So it's a situation where we're saying, "These are the costs, these are the prices," and there's not that opportunity for somebody to say, "For the $10,000 deck, I'm only paying $2,500." So if you look at the way it's being calculated, it takes that out. Many permits are proposed to be a flat fee. It's predictable. It's equal. We know that if I'm putting on a roof, it's going to cost X amount. We know that if I'm putting in a fence, it's going to cost X amount. And it helps people plan for what their project's going to be. We're going to be requiring a signed contract when work is performed by a contractor, ensuring the proper fee is assessed. And projects not found on the list of flat fee permits, the value is multiplied by 1.2% to determine a fee. And work without a permit, as I mentioned, is going to be multiplied by three. So this fee schedule, of course, whenever we're working on anything, you have to make sure everybody's at the table to discuss it. And it was reviewed by the Bureau of Inspections, and again, they were the leaders on this, the plumbing board and the Bureau of Maintenance. And again, as you see in your packets, we did compare it with other municipalities to make sure that we were in line. We want to make sure that we're doing right by the citizens. So the next steps. So Section 51-18 allows council to amend the fee schedule. And if adopted, we'd begin outreach immediately to let the public know of the fee changes. So that would be the proposed fee schedule in the inspections office. We'd be chatting with anybody possible, press releases, et cetera, so that people knew that there was going to be a change coming. The fee schedule would become effective on January 1st, 2022. So that provides enough time for us to do that outreach. Any questions?
I, I'm rather skeptical about this because of the economy, the inflation, food, utilities, gas. I, I'm looking at these figures here, and for instance, in addition to a piece of property with a commercial, one would be, right now it's 550, it'd be $1,260. That's quite a jump. With everything that's going on, honestly, I think this is the wrong time to bring this. There's a lot of people out there that are hurting right now, and this is going to hurt them even further because of the fact that with everything that's going around, with the inflation, with just everything, I just, I'm not in favor of this by no means. Thank you, Jill.
Understood. If I can just comment to that.
Sure.
So one of the things that's happening right now is when a resident does a project or there's a commercial project, essentially with the current fee schedule, is that all the residents in the city of Batavia are subsidizing those projects. So if I never put up a deck in the entire time I'm living in Batavia, I still, because the fees are not what they commensurate with the work that has to go into it, I'm subsidizing other work that's happening. So the idea was to, to raise the fees so that we're ensuring that we're covering those costs and we're actually keeping pace with the other municipalities.
That's another thing, too. Going with other municipalities. I don't care what other municipalities are doing. I care about what's happening here in Batavia. And I just, like I said, I'm totally opposed to this, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Jill, just can you highlight, some of the fees are going down in the new schedule for residents, and some are going up for different commercial projects. And the majority of the commercial projects we're seeing are businesses that are thriving and using grant money funneled through the city, and we continue to have so much staff time spent on them. So I just wanted to point those two things out.
Sure. I mean, that's fine. I mean, if you want to do that in commercials, fine. I can agree to that. But as far as residents go and, and people from the city, no, I don't agree with that. Thank you.
So Jill, just let me get this straight. So what you're saying is by increasing the fees in certain circumstances, that's covering the time that it takes for inspection to go out there and spend the time to make sure that maybe several visits or one or two visits depending, to make sure that the project is safe and that no homes in the area will be at risk because someone violated electrical code or something like that, right?
Correct, correct.
And, and right now, by paying the lower permit fees, technically, the rest of the taxpayers are subsidizing our inspection department to go there and look at those projects. And so they're actually being, one way or another, they're going out there and they're going to look at those projects.
Yes.
So they're going to take that time, that manpower, that cost is going to be incurred. So you're, you're basically saying is, spread some of that cost towards the actual project owner themselves versus letting the rest of the taxpayers pay for that project to have a lesser fee, and they benefit by that. And the rest of the taxpayers aren't having a project, and therefore, they, they're paying, in a sense, small amount, but it's still a money. They're paying for that inspector to go there so that the person doing the project gets a break on the, on the fees.
Yes, yes.
So you're proposing to kind of even that out and let the project take care of itself, and the rest of the tax money and the rest of the time could be used other places, is what you're saying?
That's exactly it, yep.
So, and the inspection office is wholly funded by the general fund. It cannot be funded by the water fund or the sewer fund, so it is a direct result of property taxes. So that we only have those employees in our employ because of property taxes to try to offset some of that in a small way, especially on commercial-type activities, as Council President Jankowski was referring to. This would be somewhat helpful. It would also be more fair, because I think contractors come and laugh at our fee schedule, at how low our pricing is when they come in to do something, but yet how many hours they take from our inspection office.
Yeah, so Jill, I think, I don't have a problem with the fee structure, but what I do know, there is a problem with public education. And there's a lot of work being done evenings and weekends. A lot of work that's not visible from the street, for example, roof replacements and all that, where there's no permits issued, and the people know they need to get a permit. There's contractors that are a little on the shaky side, that know they can evade the permits because it won't be visible from the street. I think what we need to do is step up the public education program because besides issuing a permit at that time, you proper, you normally find out what exactly you have to be doing to do it properly. A lot of people don't know, you're just, putting a roof on today is not like the old days where you throw down some tar paper and nail down some shingles. You know, you have to have the ice guard and all the rest of that stuff. I had a neighbor quite a few years ago, and he was putting a new garage roof on. I said, "Did you get a permit?" And he said, "No, no, I don't think I need one. It's just an old garage." And then I, when I explained it to him, he finished doing one side, and I told him about ice guard and all that, and he went down and got a permit, and he thanked me. He said, "Jeez, we could have been doing that all wrong, and he had to tear half of it off so they could inspect it, and then we'd do it right." He says, "You saved me a lot of money, you know?"
Yeah. Well, inspections exist for that, to protect the health, safety, and welfare.
But what are we going to do about public education? Let them know, you have to get permits for all these items.
Yeah, we can definitely get out there. And it's having conversations with people, and maybe it's showing up at neighborhood meetings or any sort of nonprofit group or public meetings, to basically say, "These are the items that you need a permit for, and this is why." Brian, you can't walk behind there. Please don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I think oftentimes, people don't, like you said, don't realize necessarily that they need a permit for whatever they're doing. And I think once somebody says, "Hey, you need a permit for that," they're more than willing to come in and get that. But it speaks to our inspections group that they do such a great job. They're there to assist the public. So they may see something on a drawing and say, "You know what? This isn't right. This isn't going to work for you. This isn't going to, you know, make the project stable, or it's going to..." whatever. So they're there sort of to look out for people, too.
Sure.
And they do a fantastic job of, of making sure that things are constructed properly in the city of Batavia.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback with, with what Bob's saying, I think it's extremely important to be proactive with the general public in that code enforcement, I think, those guys get, get the raw end of the deal a lot of times, because they walk into a project and a lot of times they have to make recommendations that something be redone or something be added. And I've worked with a number of, of commercial accounts that have either expanded or built new, and the comment to me is always, "I'll tell you what, I've done a lot of this in other places, and the city of Batavia is the hardest ones to get along with." And, and I've worked with those guys and spoken with them, and they, and they seem like they're very easy to get along with. I think it's the situation that people get themselves into or find themselves in, not that they get themselves into it, find themselves in a situation where all of a sudden, the city's letting them know, "No, this is a requirement." This is, and a lot of the requirements are state requirements and not local, and there's no fudging when it comes to the state, as we all know. So I think the education piece, like Bob said, is very, extremely important that, and I've always said that, if we, if we know someone's coming in to, to apply for a permit, let's sit down with them ahead of time. Let them know what, what they're going to be faced with, the types of things that could pop up, the unexpecteds that cost an extra $1,000 when I'm down to my last dollar trying to expand my business. So I think commercially, that's very important. With a, with a residential permit, if somebody comes in, they should at least know what they're up against. But I think more, more importantly, the business world sees us as an unfriendly environment. I hear that all the time. I've heard it for years. I heard it when my father was a councilman. Batavia's a business unfriendly. We're not. And so I think if we do a few things proactively, we could maybe clean that reputation up a little bit, show these people that we're working with them, and we'd like to work with them hand-in-hand from, from, from the start to the finish. So this might be an opportunity for us to take a look at.
Yeah, I think it absolutely is. Inspections is hard, whatever municipality you're in. You're never hearing, "Oh, thank you so much for citing me for whatever," right? It's, it's very difficult.
You're the bad guy.
Yeah, and so it's hard. It's, it's a tough line of work. I am probably one of 10 people in New York State that's passionate about inspections because I know how important it is. And I'm a big cheerleader for our team because they do a good job. And I think if somebody's running into them and is unhappy with something they've done, it's, sometimes it's because they had to have a difficult conversation. But that difficult conversation to bring it back is because we're looking to protect the, the safety and welfare of the city.
I was talking to the fire chief just a few minutes ago, and we were talking about code enforcement and how, you know, you don't want the big fire, so you, you do code enforcement so there isn't debris laying around or accelerants in the wrong area or wiring that's not proper. And that prevents, houses are close together in some parts of the city. In my area, it's just a driveway separating our houses. So one house gets on fire, that puts my house and the other house on the other side at risk. So I think code enforcement is really important, and it has helped in some neighborhood issues. When we had large amounts of debris or garbage in backyards and neighbors were complaining, we relied on code to help us get, get out of that situation and help clean that up. So I think it's important, and, you know, it's been a while since we looked at this. I think it's worth looking at it and having the discussion about it, and now maybe the public can weigh in. We've talked about it publicly and let them give us some feedback and then work on the educational component of it.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead.
It's okay. It was a small hand.
Go ahead.
Actually, we have.
Actually, we permitted ourselves to death at my house. We have put in a deck, an in-ground pool, fenced in the yard, refenced in the yard, all of which were permitted. And I only have one thing that I need to say. When you take off a month to put in a deck and two weeks into that month, they haven't come yet, you've lost half of your vacation to watch nothing. So, if this in any way enhances the fact that their time schedule will be easier, I'm all about it.
That's the hope, you know, joined with undergov, that it'll be more efficient and we'll be out there.
I like the idea of automation and having them have some kind of a mobile data device to immediately do what they need to do right there and not have to drive all the way in then drive back out and go down, continue on in their inspection. They can go right from that location and go right to the next location.
Exactly, exactly. And they're really excited about it. You know, it's something that is really going to enhance what they're doing.
I mean, just that travel time alone and then you're in here and the phone rings and you get on the phone and then it's lunchtime and then next thing you know, it's, the day goes by fast.
Right.
So, I think that's a huge part, if that helps with that part of it, I think that alone is huge right there. So, are we in consensus to move this to the business, the next business meeting for a vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, it gets moved. Thank you very much. Reflect the stop DWI, the budget amendment?
The DWI High Visibility Engagement Campaign is awarded $7,500 and I'll pass it to the chief from there.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. As you're aware, we receive several grants throughout the year and this is an ongoing one that we receive. It's a pass-through through Genesee County from New York State. This year, we are awarded $7,500. They renamed the crackdown period to the High Visibility Engagement Campaign. So, in essence, it's the same thing you saw last year, just rebranded. It is for specific periods of time. That's why it's coming before you in front of business tonight as well because our first period starts October 29th. It's considered the Halloween period.
All right, so this will move to tonight's special business so that that time-sensitive issue can be resolved. Any questions? Okay, thank you, chief. Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's special business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Town of Batavia Streetlight Maintenance?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The town of Batavia has requested that the city enter into an agreement to maintain 31 new streetlights. These are the only, the lamp portion, not the actual poles, with our current streetlight program. They are doing a reconstruction of Park Road and also laying a water line and ask that we enter into this intermunicipal agreement with them. They would pay us for labor and materials that were used. They don't have the proper crews to maintain their lights at this time. We are already in doing agreement with them on a signal or two signals just outside the city. The reason why the superintendent of Water and Wastewater had considered it is because it is just on the city border. We wouldn't consider something any further out.
Any questions?
So, this does not move to business tonight. It would go to future business meeting.
And I noticed in, by your memo here or by the draft resolution, it says 31 streetlights. So, that's still the same?
Correct.
Didn't change, the number didn't change? It's on the, it says now therefore resolve agreement with Town of Batavia to maintain 31 streetlights on Park Road.
Just a reminder, the streetlights that the city maintains are Route 5, Route 33, Route 98, and on the major corridors, the residential lights, which many of which we have continuing complaints on are serviced and owned by National Grid. A reminder, if anyone does have an issue, they can call in to the DPW office or inspections office to report those lights out. We do have police who on their nighttime patrols also take notice of those lights and report them back. So, we have a system to report lights out to National Grid in the neighborhoods.
Okay, anyone else? So, are we in consensus to move this to a future business meeting? Probably the next one in November, I would imagine. Okay, that moves. Traffic Signal Maintenance?
This is a separate agreement also with the town of Batavia. They're proposing to have the city maintain a traffic light at Oak Orchard or Route 98 and Federal Drive. Again, the city would maintain the light but call in for help on work that was beyond the scope of our agreement or ability to do so. So, it looks like there'll be another traffic light placed there. I don't know the exact plans for that, but I do know UMMC is looking to build a campus in that vicinity somewhere just outside the limits of the city. So, that may be in relationship to that.
Okay. Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Not tonight's, but the next one?
Yes.
Okay, that moves. The Court Prosecutor, Prosecutor Service Agreement?
Thank you, Council President. The city, since 1993, has contracted with the Genesee County DA's office to provide an ADA to provide prosecutorial services for vehicle and traffic law misdemeanor-type penal law violations. On behalf of the city, I'm recommending that the city continue with the arrangement by entering into the intermunicipal agreement with Genesee County for the next two years. The increase in cost for the service is 3% each year respectively, and I recommend this be moved to the November 8th business meeting for approval.
Any questions on that? And the actual costs are listed in the memo that's just attached to that sample resolution. So, are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. The Restore New York Grant?
Restore New York Grant was awarded back in 2017 to the city of Batavia on behalf of Severino Companies. And as they prepare for their final closing here in the first week of November, this grant dispersment agreement needs to be finalized and signed off on by the city. We need to have a budget amendment and we need to enter into what's called an undertaking agreement with Severino Companies. We did this once already with the National Grid Grant, Urban Corridor Grant, where Severino Companies has agreed to enhance the walking trail behind their property, put streetlights in and benches. So, the council has already done that. We finally got in the grant dispersment agreement for Empire State Development after Severino Companies chose how they were going to finance their project. Originally, they were going to have new market tax credits in it, which meant the grant needed to be awarded in the beginning, so all the funding was together. Now, that's not part of their financing structure, not to get into the weeds. So, all of the grant money will only be awarded after project completion. So, in this case, we have done Restore New York Grants before with Tom Mancuso at The Harvester. And we also protect ourselves by utilizing the next item on the agenda in undertaking agreement, which they sign and they agree to undertake the project on the city's behalf and follow all of the state's rules and regulations during construction. And for just a little more clarity, it really focuses on the old National Grid building on the property that will be rehabilitated and saved for a commercial use. So, I'm asking that this and the next item be moved to a special business tonight for execution.
Okay, any questions on that?
I have no problem with accepting the grant. I have a great concern about when Mr. Severino intends to start doing any work and is there any stipulation in here when he has to have a completion by? I have had a lot of complaints from citizens in Batavia that this has gone way beyond any reasonable expectations of what the community had hoped to see accomplished. In the past, I've discussed it with Code and the city and Severino would let the property fall into disrepair. I was under the assumption, Code said they would take care of it, the city administration at the time. It turned out, the city ended up going over, correcting the situation, cleaning up the property, even to the point that his sign fell off the fence and the city reattached it to the fence for. I mean, it's just ridiculous that a person of this magnitude with this many operations going on at once doesn't have his own personnel to come down to Batavia at least once a month and clean up the property. Recently, they did core samples, left piles of blacktop all over the place, didn't fence it in, nothing. So, I question whether he's ever going to do anything, you know? But I think without written stipulations, we have a problem.
Well, and I'll say that at this point, the city's, I would say jurisdiction over the project is extremely limited. The jurisdiction is now transferred to the Housing Trust Fund Corporation, which is OCR, Office of Community Renewal or Housing Community Renewal. They are one of the financing agencies on the housing portion of the project and they, the reason why closing has continued to be delayed is that they needed to get all the paperwork in order with this agency to move forward. So, this is the final closing with that agency who will oversee the entire project, especially the residential, for a 30-year time period with the lending that they have in place with this agency. Beyond that, the BDC still has some stipulations in a deed on file. But again, when the project starts construction, it'll finally be time, I guess, to let go and let them move because we've sat here for how many years and tried to get it to happen? Well, now, they're almost about to do it and it's a different feeling to let go and let the construction happen. I have no doubt that when they start construction and start the brownfield cleanup, that they will finish because they won't make any returns as a business transaction without having those rooms, you know, rented and having the commercial space filled. So, and being that this developer does projects in various parts of the state, they would never want to lose the trust of the Office of Community Renewal in this project. So, some of those things give me faith, but I can't, I guess, speak anymore to that.
Is the BDC and the city of Batavia fully paid now for the property acquisition?
So, the BDC is fully paid for the transaction of the LLC which contained the properties. Yes, that was in July.
The city's totally out of it?
The city was fully paid for the permits that were issued early last year and then some, they were paid for extensions of permits as well.
Thank you.
Are you referring to the city will reimburse the ESD for all out-of-pocket expenses in connection with the project? Because that was in the email that you sent me, I decided to read it. George, anyone?
I'm not sure which email you're referring to, but basically, what the undertaking agreement does is take the Restore New York Grant, pass that through to the applicant. So, all the obligations that exist under the Restore New York Grant that the city had to be involved in for purposes of obtaining the grant through the undertaking agreement are passed along to the applicant that's going to perform the project. Okay? So, that's number one, how and why the agreement's set up the way it is. As to Councilman Bukowski's question, it's not really the type of an agreement where you'd set terms, conditions, and timelines in it. There are other documents and other restrictions that exist with the other agencies relative to what those timelines for completion of construction need to be, for mortgage placement, things of that sort. It's not germane to the undertaking agreement, so that's why it's not in there.
So, Councilwoman Christian, I believe you're referring to the terms of the agreement. So, the check to reimburse out-of-pocket costs of hosting a public hearing, all projects with Empire State Development that get funding have to host a public hearing and therefore, we would issue that check and then we'd bill Severino Companies for it. So, that's absolutely no issue. That's just how these processes work.
Is the city also paying 10% of the match grant to the project?
No, so the 10% is showing that the Severino Companies is putting in 10% of more to the project. So, they need to invest at least 6.5 million, I believe, before they can get their funds back out.
And then, on one of the pages, it says the employment, financial condition documentation was blank. Why was it blank?
It's all part of the scope of the project with Severino Companies. So, that's not, that's not part of our, we're just basically a pass-through agency and if they don't give us the correct information for us to give Empire State Development, they won't get the funds back. We're not advancing any money. We are simply a pass-through agency.
Now, my last question is, the new market tax credit financing structure is not being used. What does that mean?
So, new market tax credits are not part of the financial structure. So, they are using traditional lending with a bank with a construction loan and also, they're using Office of Community Renewal housing tax credits with it. So, it's not the new market structure in the chart that shows what new market tax credit is, is this big and that wide and 500 lines in it. So, I don't think we want to jump down the rabbit hole of that tonight.
Okay, and to piggyback on Bob's question, do we have a definite date or we don't have a definite date?
They're telling me the first week of November.
That they will start?
They will close and start immediately.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And the key here is, they don't perform the work.
They don't get paid.
They don't get paid. So, they will be, it has to be certified, completed per this grant and then the state will write, or then they will write the check.
Yep, and we tried to bring the grant forward several times before, but without them knowing their financing structure, I couldn't bring this forward because the grant dispersment agreement could have changed in the interim and it would no longer be valid. So, now, it's the last minute. Now, we get to do it.
And this is also another step closer to November, them starting the project?
Correct. They will need this as part of the final closing package and that's why I'm asking that if you approve the grant dispersment agreement and the undertaking agreement, you move it to business tonight.
We won't have a meeting before that occurs then.
I missed one of my questions.
Go ahead.
Flood insurance and the fire all risk policy, they have to pay for all of that?
Yes, they're building in a flood zone. In fact, this is kind of a monumental project now that I think about it because they are building this inside the flood zone. It will be flood compliant and they will absolutely have to have proper insurances. That's not something we track, though.
Right. Thank you.
You're talking brownfield and a flood zone. That's pretty, that's probably one of the reasons, many reasons, this has taken so long to settle this whole thing out, plus the funding, like you said, so. So, we're in consensus to move that to tonight's special business?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Six-month budget transfers?
Thank you, Council President. As everyone knows, the city is committed to maintaining tight oversight of taxpayer funds and to that end, every year, a six-month budget review is done where department heads submit the amount they think they're going to be spending in the next six months. We are doing well on the revenue side. The tax payments have come in thus far at 95.4% on the revenue side, which is good for this time of year. That's property tax payments in the city. And other revenues are coming in as expected, some a little higher in sales tax revenue. But a few expenses have been identified to be going over budget or likely to go over budget. Those include litigation legal services, including our labor attorney expenses. We're asking for a modification to use reserves to pay for a fiber project that was undertaken in 2021 but ended up being finalized in this budget year, 2122. We couldn't get a flagman for the railroad to go out to the water plant. So, there were some expenses occurred in this budget year. A general increase in IT services funds resulting from the software improvement project. We actually have more servers running than we anticipated, so our managed service contract is higher. We've also had more site visits from our IT firm than we had anticipated. And lastly, budget transfers to reflect a service contract with Lobella Engineers, who are currently assisting the city with various projects in the absence of a city DPW director. So, I'm asking that council advance this to the November... So, I'm asking that council advance this to the November 8th business meeting.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, we're all in consensus to move that to November business meeting? It's moved. Sewer camera surplus?
Thank you, Council President. The City Bureau of Maintenance Superintendent would like to trade in the city's existing sewer camera, which is 10 years old, and its accessories for approximately $3,600 worth of value. That value would be applied to the purchase of the new camera that council authorized at the last meeting to make some improvements to the purchase they're making right now. In looking at this, the superintendent decided that at auction, we couldn't guarantee any price with the camera we have, so at least in this way, we're guaranteeing $3,600 worth of value. But as our, as our purchasing policy dictates, surplusing an item, we do need council approval to move forward.
Questions or concerns on that? Okay, we're in consensus to move that to the November business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Jackson Square bid award?
So, this is a resolution that will come to a future business meeting. Likely, you will not see it, we may have to do a special business meeting on November 22nd, but as you'll recall, the Jackson Square project is a $750,000 DRI project that will include new pavement, decorative lighting, a new stage, and aesthetic improvements to the public space. It is now out to bid for construction. We will not have the bids back until November 12th, and that's why I say we can't look at this again until November 22nd, but we wanted to be able to move very quickly because our construction timeline is extremely tight. We were hoping to get started in late fall, break for winter, finish up as the snow melted. It looks like we'll be a little bit late on that timeline. We've informed the bid director to let her know that she's just going to have to play it by ear with the concert series, but our hope is that we do have the contractor selected in November, some work started before the snow flies, and then finish up by June. None of that takes into account the COVID supply chain, so.
Any questions or concerns on that? Bob?
Has the issue with the stage, with the magnifying glass design, the cook, the band, has that been resolved?
Yes, it's all set.
What, what did they come up with?
No, we've had translucent glass on it from the beginning that does not show through, nor would it cook anyone standing underneath it.
So, are, so are we all in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that carries through. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Mr. Carras, seconded by Mr. Canelli. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carras?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Okay. I now call to order the special business meeting. We'll assign the items. Item 78-2021, the Stop DWI Grant, Mr. Byakowski. 79-2021, the Restore New York Grant, Mr. Canelli. And 80-2021, the Undertaking Agreement, Mr. Carras. Okay, 78-2021, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution amending the Police Department budget to reflect the receipt of a Stop DWI grant.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Carras?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Resolution 80-2021, Mr. Carras, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the execution of an undertaking agreement between the City of Batavia and Severino Companies LLC.
Seconded by?
For a Restore New York Grant to benefit the Ellicott Station project.
Thought you were going to stop there.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to stop there. Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead.
It's actually disgusting going down Ellicott Street and seeing that mess. I mean, it's deplorable, and I don't have any faith in this company that wants to do it. Thank you.
Just to remind everyone, if we, they don't get this grant, it's a major setback to them, and we've come this far. I mean, I'm not, and I'm not happy about it either, but I think to end it this close to the finish line is kind of not the thing I would like to do, so. Anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carras?
Yes.
Byakowski?
With great concerns about ever seeing this project completed, I'm going to vote yes, but I hope it's a lesson into the future of projects.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Okay, take us into executive session, please.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105-1H of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter to executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. And whereas Article 7, Section 105-1F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And whereas Article 7, Section 105-1D of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation, now therefore being resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by, Ms. Christian. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Carras?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Resolution 80-2021, Mr. Carras, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the execution of an undertaking agreement between the City of Batavia and Severino Companies LLC.
Seconded by?
For a Restore New York Grant to benefit the Ellicott Station project.
Thought you were going to stop there.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to stop there. Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead.
It's actually disgusting going down Ellicott Street and seeing that mess. I mean, it's deplorable, and I don't have any faith in this company that wants to do it. Thank you.
Just to remind everyone, if we, they don't get this grant, it's a major setback to them, and we've come this far. I mean, I'm not, and I'm not happy about it either, but I think to end it this close